two thousand twenty-three, and if you could please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And this evening's invocation will be Tracy Moss from North Coast Church. Greetings.
Greetings. Thank you, Mayor. Will you bow your heads with me? Gracious Father, we thank you. We thank you for the freedom of this building and the freedom to come and assemble. God, we thank you for these civil servants who have given of their time and their talents and their treasures, God, to spend time on the benefit of this city. And God, you show us in your word that there are authorities and governing parties, Lord, that we are to seek wise counsel from. I ask that you would be with our mayor today and for all the levels of city officials and for this assembled council, that you would grant them wisdom to govern all the interests and issues of our time, a sense of welfare and true needs of our people, a keen sense of justice and righteousness, confidence in what is good and fitting for the people, and peace in their lives and joy for them. In this November, God, we want to thank you. We want to be in thanks for all that we get the opportunity to do. Be with the agenda today and all that they will cover, the resolutions and all of the pieces, God. So we just give this time to you. We would honor you, and I ask that you would bless this council. In your name we pray. Amen.
Okay, please be seated. Mr. Scarlett, could we please give the roll call?
Councilmember Musgrove?
Present.
Councilmember Nunez?
Present.
Councilmember Sinella?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Jenkins?
Here.
And Mayor Jones?
Here.
Okay, next is Proclamations and Presentations, and Councilmember Sinella, that's going to be you.
Perfect timing. Well, good evening, everyone, and thank you, Mayor, for giving me an opportunity to give out a special recognition tonight. Tonight is a special night where we honor community members for their contributions to our city and for them embracing and reflecting on San Marcos' spirit of service. We have a special award that we give out five times a year called the Smile Award. It stands for San Marcos Inspirational Leadership and Excellence Award. And so tonight, we are going to be honoring and recognizing the Hops in the Hills founders, and we'll talk a little bit about Hops in the Hills in a second, but I want to ask Richard and Amory Amador to come up and Tina and Philip Heap to come up, please, if we can give them a quick little round of applause. I'll get these out in a second. But so this is, this is actually really extra exciting for me tonight because not only do these four folks do so much in our community to support our schools, and I'll talk about that here in a minute, but it's a reminder that to all of us that San Marcos is still very much a small town. Tonight, I get to recognize four friends, and I think larger cities might not have that opportunity because they may not know all of the movers and shakers in their, in their city. It's also really exciting for me because my wife and I, and just like all my colleagues behind me, we attend a number of events almost weekly every year, and the Hops in the Hills event is by far, and I wouldn't, I wouldn't say by far our favorite, but definitely one of the favorites. I don't want to get in trouble with any of the others. It's definitely one of our, one of our favorites that my wife and I look forward to all year long. So it's a great opportunity to bring the community together, have a lot of fun, get outdoors, and just spend time together and raise money for a good cause. So thank you for that. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna try to give a little background for the folks that are not familiar with Hops in the Hills. If I miss anything, you know, I don't, feel free to correct me or, or come up and let, you know, let's have a conversation about it. But Hops in the Hills was, you guys basically were coming together for an idea to raise money for schools. You met with a local brewer in, in the neighborhood and, in the, in the PTO at San Leo Hills, and you eventually came together with an idea to have like a beer garden type experience for the community that would raise money for the schools ultimately. Is that essentially it?
Okay, cool.
And you started about five years ago?
Yep.
So in two thousand seventeen, their first year of having this event, they raised about eighty-four hundred dollars, which for the first time having an event, that's phenomenal. But, but here's where it gets really exciting. So in two thousand eighteen, they raised twenty-seven thousand dollars. That's over two-hundred percent increase year over year. And then they continued. In two thousand nineteen, they raised thirty-one thousand, which was again, continued growth. In two thousand twenty and two thousand twenty-one, unfortunately, we all know we had COVID, so you had to kind of shut things down for, for a couple of years, unfortunately. But in two thousand twenty-two, they bounced back after two years off and raised the most that they ever had raised before at thirty-nine thousand dollars. So that's awesome. And then in this year, earlier this year in the summer, they raised thirty-seven thousand dollars. And so grand total for, for the schools here in San Marcos, they've raised over a hundred and forty-two thousand dollars over the last five years. And I also want to note that all of the Hops in the Hills ticket sales goes towards San Marcos schools, and it's just a tremendous investment for our children and enriching our local classroom experiences. I don't know if you do want to speak, but, but before, before you do come up, I also wanted to take a second to give a couple of shout-outs. One is to all of the sponsors. I know that you have a number of sponsors that you, that participate, and they, they play a big role in making the event successful. And then also, of course, our city staff. I want to thank everybody that's involved from Parks and Recreation to the Fire Department, the Sheriff's Department, to ensure that everybody has a fund and save time while they're out there. So again, congratulations. Thank you for everything that you do. And does anybody want to speak or no? You don't, you don't have to. Okay. Well, thank you. Oh, well, we're taking pictures for sure.
I was waiting for the thirty-minute speech.
You want to come up and get some pictures?
Thank you. Congratulations. Thank you for all your work. All right. Moving on to our consent calendar, we have one speaker on item number eleven. So do I have any items that any council members wish to pull? Nope. Okay, seeing none, I move approval of items one through ten. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we have item number eleven. We have one speaker. Oh, I'm sorry, we actually have two speakers now. John Mosher and then followed by Tim Sheehan.
in, in going through the adjustments that are being proposed to the procedures for the rent review hearing, there's just a couple of items I wanted to bring up. One that I've run into myself when I was tenant representative is, in, in the ordinance originally, it had beside tenant, it also had a possibly, like a parentheses S, so you could have multiple representatives for the tenants, not just one person. I, I know throughout that you're allowed to have an attorney with you besides having a representative that's actually set there as a point of contact to begin the procedure, that once you go ahead and fight the increase, you've got somebody to contact to go back and forth with to begin with. But when you get to the actual hearing itself is where I'm concerned because we have turnover being a senior park. And I know even when I did it, I could have used, had help. I could have used an additional representative with me when we were going through the hearing. And I had seen it in the ordinance before that there was a possibility, but I don't see anything in, in there right now. And also, if there's a change and, and the people want to change who they had on the petition, that we have to put a name on the petition initially to submit it, that if we change from that person to another representative we're actually at the hearing, how can we have that included? I know in here that you have, I believe, it's twenty-eight days prior, we're supposed to submit written documentation of who our representative is approved by the people that signed the petition. At the same time, the petition itself designates a representative, and that, so you end up with, with two sets of ideas about who your representative is and who it can be. That, that was one of the things. It actually has been in my mind for a while now. The other thing was there's a, there's a change in the hearing procedure itself. If you go, it's actually in section eleven at the very end. The other one actually was in section five, excuse me. They've added, in the testimony at large, we would have representative, our, our own people come in and talk. Now, it said that now the owner representative can cross-examine those people. I, I bring this up because if, if our rep, if our people are going to be cross-examined on standing up there for two minutes trying to say what happened on their space, we had enough problems getting them to get here to begin with, that I, I see a problem with that. I recognize what it said in here legally, that apparently some other case up north, it had been proposed and, and that was put into law up there. I did see where the same people could submit written statements, but this would have to be at the time that we did our original submittal in the process. So actually, I'm really looking for clarification, is for our people. If, if we're able to submit it like that, then I wouldn't have people being worried about being cross-examined just to say that somebody didn't do a retaining wall on their property or what was happening that way. I know the witnesses that I had here for our hearing would have done pretty well because it's specific to their own site, but to me, it, it puts extra pressure on getting your residents to come, especially you fear retaliation when it's specifically you, your space compared to try and get a group together to accomplish things. That's something we run into all the time. So the other side of that is, like in our hearing, the, the park manager submitted a written statement where it would have been nice to have them here, where we could have cross-examined them because we submitted evidence showing that part of that statement was not true. So if, if it's true where they get to cross-examine our witnesses, I would like to see where we had the ability to also cross-examine theirs like we do in other parts of the hearing.
Mrs. Peak, are you, do you have any clarity on those two questions?
With respect to the tenant representatives, the designation, the deadline is actually later than it was, so that is a misreading of the, of the revised procedures. You're not absolutely required to submit at the time of petition. It's just a much easier and process for the name to be submitted, so you don't forget, which has happened so many times, where the name is not submitted timely and we have to chase after tenant representatives to get the name of the actual tenant representatives. You're not limited to one. It can be more than one, but it's, you know, and certainly if that tenant representative moves during the course of the proceedings, you would have an opportunity, you would not go unrepresented, you would have an opportunity to designate additional persons. And an attorney is always allowed, being an attorney myself, I kind of like having him around. So yeah, you can bring an attorney. They can stand with you. They can speak with you. They can speak for you, but they speak for you as the tenant representative. And I mean you generically as tenant representatives, not you specifically, as I know you've stepped down from that the last time or two. With respect to the cross-examination issue, that is currently the law of the land, and until another court of appeal has actually directed, come to a different decision, and there is conflict between the two, which we then would hope that the Supreme Court would actually come in and reconcile, that is the law of the land, and we must require that. And because it is their, quote, in their view, property interest at stake, it's very important for us to make sure that that is done. You do have the opportunity to cross-examine, and in the event that you, you know, have questions of the tenant representative, I'm sorry, the park owner representative witness or testimony, you should raise that during the course of your written, your verbal remarks at the time of the, at the hearing. So that is, and actually, that is an omission on seven. We can do cross-examination of commission consultants and owner representatives. So we will make that addition to the procedures.
Well, you sort of have part of it covered on number two, where
Yeah.
On, on just, but it would be, it would be just their witnesses.
Well, and that is, you can cross-examine the owner representative on
Again, on that statement?
Submission. So you're right. We don't need that addition to seven, but I think you could, you could certainly make those comments. But you can, you can cross-examine the owner's representative over any element of the written submission because that is submitted under penalty of perjury with respect to the, the owner representative. So yes, cross-examination is certainly permitted on behalf of the tenants.
Okay. And would, would it be true that our tenants could provide their written statements also like the park manager did?
Yes, thanks for reminding me of that point. They could submit the written statements. However, you know, if they're not present, they are not going to be able to rebut or respond to any issues that the owner's representative may make about those written comments.
Right. Yeah, I understood that. Plus, if they spoke to you, they couldn't talk about anything, they couldn't talk about the same thing they just submitted in a written statement, they would have to talk about a different aspect of them.
Well, we find it generally that things do happen to be repeated, so
Yeah.
We don't have much control over that. But I think that in, in many occasions, I remember those kinds of anecdotal issues being raised by the tenant representative in their written submissions, and you could simply expand on those if you like as part of the initial written submission.
Okay.
But it is, you know, it, it is unfortunately a duty to bring forward any concerns that you have, be they, you know, just in terms of operations or maintenance, in those written submissions and in verbal testimony. So, but however they get there before the commission, you know, you're encouraged to do that, either one or both, so.
Right.
I, I had one question for clarification. On the commission procedures, and five, section five at the bottom of the page where it says designation of tenant representative, Mrs. Peak?
Yes.
Should we, should we put in there in parentheses S? That's on page, sorry, page five, I think it is? Yes, five of fifteen.
Right.
Should we put an S in parentheses just so that it would, it would actually say that you could have more than one representative, that it could be plural? Would that be the right place?
It does make it a little bit more difficult. We would like one voice
Yeah.
That we can give notice to. What that does is expands the requirement in terms of getting and receiving notice. So if the commission desires to make that change, we can do that. It is preferable for staff if, if there is a person that's designated. If there, if they, if they indicate that they're going to be supported at the hearing by someone else, you know, you're not limited to one voice at the hearing. You can designate your time as between, with respect to other folks as well. And that's also been done quite frequently by the tenants in the past. So, but it really is up to the commission.
And that makes sense. I, I think one person is good, but where would we, where would we add that they can have more than one representative actually at the hearing? Where would an appropriate place, just because I'd like to address that if we could.
Yeah, I appreciate it, because that's what I ran into. Initially, you, you have one person, so all communication goes back and forth with them to start the procedure.
Right, right.
But then, then as you head into the hearing, it gets to a point for us that would help to actually have multiples besides, you know, a witness that can only talk for two minutes.
Right.
Just because of different expertise of the people.
Right.
Well, you are limited to the overall timeframe in the format,
Right, you still have the thirty minutes.
But we could change the hearing segment descriptions in section ten. We could add the parentheses S in parentheses to the references to the tenant representative. So that, that speaks to the hearings itself as opposed to the pre-hearing procedural notice provisions. So
Wait, where is that at?
That's in section ten. It's page nine of the procedures.
Okay.
It's next to the last page, the penultimate page.
I think I went in there wrong. Oh, I see. Okay, yeah. So if we, yeah, let's, let's add that in if you don't mind. I mean, that's what I would like. Does anyone have a problem with that? That, that would be my addition to that.
That's certainly fine with me. It limit
S in parentheses.
It allows them to have additional representation and voices at the hearing, and that's fine as long as we're following the timeframe.
Okay.
How that timeframe is actually constructed
Yeah, yeah.
By the tenants is fine. Yeah.
Okay, okay. All right. Does that address that for you, John?
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, because I wanted to do it last year, and then when I did it, it would have been helpful too. But yeah, I appreciate it.
Okay, great. Okay, and then next up, we have Tim Sheehan.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers and staff. I'm Tim Sheehan. I'm current president of San Marcos Mobile Home Residents Association. I just received notice of the changes in the resolution yesterday, and my appeal to you would be to be given some time to postpone action this evening. Cimra, our association, has a specialist attorney on retainer who's been involved for over thirty years, has worked closely with Don Lincoln, the consultant to the, the commission, and there's several positive changes that are proposed, and, and we don't have any objections to those, but we think there might be additional changes that would be warranted and would encourage the council to embrace the opportunity to have a back and forth, just like we've had this evening a little bit, to refine the changes before adopting the new resolution.
So, Mrs. Peak, I think we're limited in the changes that we can make. I mean, they're very minute, just for clarification. What, what
What, what, staff would recommend that the commission proceed to adopt procedures this evening, updated and amended procedures this evening as possible, because I don't want to get in, they've been delayed because we had another park petition come into the pipeline. We would like to get these requirements in play for the next petition that might come in the pipeline so that the rules are actually clear
Right.
And have been clarified. Some of the issues that Mr. Sheehan has raised are somewhat beyond the scope of simply the commission's procedures for hearing.
Right.
And I do understand the concerns about, for example, the long-term lease issues and impacts of AB twenty-seven eighty-two, which we have addressed by including language that says to the extent that they are affected by the changes to the Civil Code. So we've addressed some of those issues already to the extent that they are appropriately addressed in procedures. With respect to the ordinance in, in chief, there are changes we'd love to make to the ordinance, but that requires a whole different process as the council is well aware, and we are still in the process of studying those. We would certainly welcome Attorney Stanton's contributions and Mr. Sheehan's contributions to thoughts about changes to the ordinance, and I think the Housing Program Director has invited a discussion on those issues. But with respect to the procedures, it would be great just to get some of these adjustments in play so that we have kind of common sense things, like we can email notices. We can administratively change a date of an, or a, a hearing if the parties are all in agreement without coming back to the commission. Just basic things that make day-to-day life both for the, the, the tenant population, the park owners, and the relationship with city staff. It just smoothes out a lot of these speed bumps that we've been hitting on the way. So we would recommend that you consider adopting the revised procedures this evening.
Okay, all right. Thank you. All right. Thank you, Mr. Sheehan.
Thank you.
Oh, go ahead.
Yeah.
Yeah, sorry, I was going to open up for, oh, did you have a question of Mr. Sheehan?
Not a question, I just wanted to just
Okay, yeah. Council commentary now, yep.
Yeah, thank you. Tim, thank, thank you for coming and thank you for your emails earlier today. I, I did read them, and I, I don't know when the last time you checked your email, but you did get one answer from staff regarding, you, you'd asked for the specialist attorneys to have a chance to review and, and consult on, on these procedural changes. And if you haven't seen it, they did respond and, and did say in fact that those, Attorney Don Lincoln and, and Consultant Dr. Barr did have a chance to go ahead and re, not only review it, but they've also contributed to some of the changes. So they've, they've been involved in that process.
And, oh, yes. Thank you. And yes, thank you, Councilmember Sinella, for reminding me that, yes, Tim, we, we ran these by Dr. Barr and Tim, we ran these by Dr. Barr and Don Lincoln right away. And in fact, the latest effort was initiated by some of their requests. So they are responsible for a good deal of the smoothing out of the process and have contributed a great deal of thought and contemplation to some of the procedural changes. So, yes.
No, like I said, I thought that virtually all of them were positives, but I thought that we might make some additional helpful suggestions. If that has to be down the road, we'll take what we can get.
And I do think that you will definitely have an opportunity for positive impact in terms of any future, more substantive revisions to the procedures that might affect the resident community or with respect to potential future changes to the ordinance. And none of that is before the commission this evening.
So.
Could I be included on potential changes?
First, you know, we allowed, I allowed Mr. Sheehan to do this because it was fairly quick, but we can't be having a dialogue from the audience. So if you want to make any comments, you might, you might step forward again. But you will certainly be included on a list.
We'll make sure that we provide the information to both of you that were here this evening on any further correspondence on this. Okay.
And did you, did you have something else?
Helen answered my question before I asked it.
Councilmember Noon, yes?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of points of clarification. If we do vote to approve these changes today, can you remind me what the timeline looks like? They're effective today, or what will that look like?
It is adopted by resolution, as they have been all of the times that they were either adopted or amended. This is a completely amended and restated version and is being requested to be adopted by ordinance, I'm sorry, by resolution, and that would be immediately effective. So for any petition that is filed or inquiry that occurs hereafter, these rules would be applicable to that proceeding.
Thank you for that clarification. And then I just want to make sure that our residents understand. So if there are any procedural changes to the law that are not identified here, obviously, we would take those into account, should they be applicable.
Yes, to whatever degree the city has preempted. And, you know, it does happen from time to time, and not just in the mobile home context. We do follow the law.
Yes.
So we, we, there are times when we argue against preemption because it is a matter of local concern. And certain elements of the rent review process is a local concern. But there are other elements about long-term leases in general and the exemption from state restriction or exemption from rent control ordinances that are very likely to be imposed on the city from the state down. So we certainly recognize when that occurs, and we would certainly bring that to the council's attention.
Thank you. Nothing further.
Okay, I, I would, oh, sorry. Did someone say something? No. Okay. Sorry, I thought I heard someone say something. It must have been the squeaking of the thing. So I would move that we approve it as is with the one change of adding the S in parentheses. So it would be one small addition. Other than that, move forward so we can get that actually working. And then we will notify you both moving forward of any other discussions about the actual ordinance itself and non-procedural. So we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any noes? Okay, seeing none, motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Why push that off? Moving on to public speakers, we have Suzanne, followed by Suhe, Suheer, followed by Rowan, and then Maureen Walder. So you'd be in that. So Suzanne is first.
Good evening, everyone. I'm here independently as a community member, specifically a Palestinian community member. Mayor Rebecca Jones, on October twenty-second, you attended an event at the county building with faith leaders and other city representatives to pray for the release of Israeli hostages. On that very day that you expressed your support for Israel, four hundred Palestinians were killed in what was described as Gaza's heaviest day of bombing since the start of the Israelis' bombardment two weeks prior. Today marks thirty-eight days since the beginning of, today marks thirty-eight days of Israel's attacks on Gaza, and already more than eleven thousand Palestinians have been killed, over forty-five hundred of them being children. In addition to those deaths, twenty-eight thousand Palestinians have been injured, and over one million citizens have been internally displaced. With twenty-one hospitals out of service due to lack of resources, aid, and Israel's bombing of hospitals, patients have nowhere to go. They are being operated on while they lay on the floor with no morphine, no anesthesia, with doctors using flashlights from their phones to be able to see. Patients have nothing but cloth rags to bite down on in hopes it'll relieve their pain. Mothers are giving birth and being discharged from the hospital just hours after. I know some of you here are mothers. Can you imagine that pain?
Oh, I am a mother.
Can you imagine that fear of delivering your baby and not knowing if you can keep them safe after? And now, let's say these mothers and their babies survive the birth. Palestinians don't have food or clean water or basic necessities along with the medical or clean water, since basic necessities are not being allowed in. So now, people that survive Israelis', Israel's bombardment are at risk of dying from starvation and dehydration. And in fact, as of November eighth, twelve have died due to that reason. It has been thirty-eight days of Israel's relentless bombing of innocent civilians. So I ask why we, as Palestinians, have not been extended the same sympathy and prayers from our representatives? You have failed us all as community leaders for not acknowledging our suffering, for not being the voice we need, for not making Palestinians and people in support of Palestine feel safe in the community and not calling for a ceasefire in Gaza. You have failed us by not acknowledging our humanity, our basic right to be seen by the people who claim to represent us. We are members of your community. My family has lived in San Marcos for forty-five years. We own businesses. Our kids go to school here. We pay taxes, and we deserve to have leadership that accurately represents us. And as of now, I must say, you have not accurately been representing us. We demand for a ceasefire in Gaza and the allowance of aid to relieve and assist the two million Palestinians in need, and we call on you all to demand that. Thank you.
Okay, the next speaker will be Suheer.
We all see that our time, so thank you all.
Okay, Rowan, I guess, also, and then Maureen.
I just want to add something, just to remind you, that we are Palestinian, Muslim, and Christian Americans that are part of the fabric of this community that we call home. So I want you to remember that, because as you say, that you are a concerned citizen and you like equality, you did not show that. All we want is equal, justice for all, and prayers for all, equal prayers for all, because everybody, everybody deserves that. Every child deserves that. Thank you.
Thank you. I do a lot of praying in my home. Thank you very much. Marlene Walder was, will be next. Hi, Marlene.
Hi, Madam Mayor, Deputy Mayor, Councilman, and staff. I came really to talk about something else, but now I have changed what I'm talking about. And that is the mobile home, because even though that was a procedure, I'm hoping that you can make the procedure a little stronger in the future. They were supposed to have emergency evacuation. Our management does not give us a list of anybody. When the roster is totally incorrect, and I ask her about someone or tell her someone is sick or dying, and she doesn't know anything about it. Last month, a friend of mine died in the park, and she wasn't even aware that the lady was sick. The neighbor on the next street had come to visit her three days before she died. And she went home and may have died. We don't know if she died the next day or died herself. And it was three days before she was found. But people knew she was sick, but didn't, there's no one who checks on anybody, even though we've tried to get different neighbors to check on them. And a lot of times, we don't know they're sick. But management has no consideration for them, which really upsets me. And I, no emergency plan has been put into effect now for five years almost. It was before COVID that we did anything, like two years before COVID, that we did anything with block captains. And it was the previous manager or the three managers before who did anything, so maybe even longer. And we have no current list, anywheres, of the people who are living in the park now. We had, I think, five deaths within the past two weeks. And people don't know, you know, we see the houses being flipped, but we don't know anything else that they're gone except for that they've been flipped. Three friends of mine have passed away in the last month. And there are two now who are on hospice, and I see three more houses that are being flipped also. So that's a major concern. The other concern, which I did come, and I still have enough time, is Myers, the new townhouses that opened up on that street. You've now made them a special lane to come out of their park and probably due to the number of accidents that they've already had trying to turn left on Barham when there was no left turn there. And you're going to allow the new apartments, condos, or whatever they're going to be called, I don't know, on Barham with the same thing with no left turn lane except at certain hours. They're going to ignore it totally, and only because they had three major accidents from people turning left when you already had posts and the street was coming in this way and going out this way only, and they're going around it. So now you've made an extra lane for them. It hasn't been completed yet. And there's terrible potholes in the street there. You're making concessions for these new expensive townhouses, but you haven't made for either of the mobile home parks, even if it means taking away more of our land and moving the wall. Because when we come out on Barham to turn left, we can't see down the road below the hill because they put up a wall, the park has, blocking the view of down the road. And so you have to pull out into the streets slightly. And that doesn't allow a visual safety to see down the road, to see these cars who are speeding because they don't have a red light to stop where the cars in the next lane have a red light to stop for us to turn left to get out of the park. And I think that has to be, if you're giving the one place a left turn lane or a road, we need it to.
I'm not sure. We can direct staff to look into that and get back to you. I don't really know about that, so we'll have someone reach out to you. I did want to tell you that if you're ever concerned about one of your neighbors, that the sheriff's department will do a welfare check for you if you need that. It's five one oh fifty-two hundred is their non-emergency number, seven six zero five one zero fifty-two hundred. And then you can call them, and they'll definitely do a welfare check. They'll send over the volunteer patrol and do that.
I know, but we don't even, sometimes, I mean, I know the people I know, but I don't know all the people who are sick. And I didn't even realize the other lady was that sick, because I had seen her at her house. And I figured if she was able to walk over there with her dog. I never had any idea, but the other neighbors checked on her and found her dead.
I'm not, I'm not sure if there is a requirement to have an emergency plan, but you could certainly talk to, if it is a requirement, we can look into that as well and get back to you on that.
It's supposed to be emergency evacuation for when we had the fire?
Right.
I just wanted to point out that there is emergency plans. My mom lives in a fifty-five and up community. And, but those are a little bit different than I think what you're looking for. And that, that particular, like welfare checks and kind of keeping an eye on folks in the community is kind of more neighbor-driven. And, but there's a lot of best practices and resources out there. So I'll do a little research, and I'll email them to you.
Okay. But the emergency plan has not been in effect for five years. And when we had the fires, if you remember, that was really the last one that was truly in effect. And I had to make sure my block and another block was, everyone was evacuated to come to the school, and that was worse. The smoke was so bad over there, and they had no electricity for those of us on CPAP machines.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Marlene. Moving on to public hearings, we have item number twelve, ordinance twenty-twenty-three thirteen, I'm sorry, fifteen thirty-nine, and resolution twenty-twenty-three ninety-two forty-one, codification of the Transportation Demand Management Ordinance, approving an exemption from review under CEQA and establishing a transportation demand management policy. Do we have a, oh?
Thank you, Mayor Jones.
I looked over, and there you all are. Okay.
Thank you, Mayor Jones and council members. Simon Korshey, our sustainability program manager, will be providing a presentation on this item tonight.
Thank you so much. Good evening. So I'll be starting the presentation today with some definitions, starting with what is a transportation demand management or TDM. Basically, it is a set of requirements that's, it is a set of requirements aimed at maximizing multimodal travel options. And these include transit, walking, biking, and telework. The way the staff is proposing structuring TDM requirements for the city include adoption of a TDM ordinance, which will be chapter twenty-three fifty and will be included in the city's zoning ordinance, and then also approval of a TDM policy that will include strategies implemented by a project to comply with the ordinance. The requirements for the adoption of TDM ordinance come from the city's adopted climate action plan, which includes strategies to reduce VMTs, or vehicle miles traveled, and includes a very specific measure that requires that the city adopt a TDM ordinance. Additionally, the city's general plan mobility element requires that new projects prepare and also implement TDM plans. The, to structure the TDM ordinance and policies, staff and its consultants reviewed and evaluated TDM ordinances from peer cities, including adjacent city of Carlsbad. We also assessed currently approved TDM plans for various private projects in the city. We interviewed some employers in San Marcos that are responsible for implementing TDM plans for their projects and also reviewed guidance provided by CAPCOA, or California Air Pollution Control Officers Association. As a result of that research, staff is recommending that a new chapter twenty-three fifty to be incorporated in title twenty of the municipal code. This chapter establishes the TDM ordinance with the goal of lessening traffic impacts by reducing VMTs in the city and the region. Chapter twenty-three fifty incorporates the TDM policy by reference. This ordinance will be applicable to any development project that is not exempt from CEQA requirements and would result in emissions of more than five hundred metric tons of carbon dioxide per year. The threshold for compliance with TDM ordinance is the same as the screening criteria of climate action plan compliance requirements for development projects. Projects that are subject to the TDM ordinance are required to establish project-specific TDM plans during the entitlement process. TDM plans during the entitlement process in consultation with the city's staff. The TDM plans for projects shall include all mandatory strategies plus a selection of optional strategies presented in the city's TDM policy. Once approved by the city with other entitlement applications, the TDM plans are binding on the applicant and the successor for the life of the project. The project applicants are responsible for implementing, monitoring, and reporting on their TDM plans. The initial report on monitoring is due to the city after one year of the issuance of final certificate of occupancy. And then after the initial reports, the monitoring reports are required to be submitted every other year during the first five years of a project's operations. This graphic here on this slide represents the sequence of compliance with the TDM ordinance. The TDM policy implements the TDM ordinance. It includes 29 total strategies. Six of those are required for all projects and an additional 23 are included as optional strategy. Each has an assigned point value to it. Projects must implement the required strategies and then can choose any combination of optional ones to achieve the minimum 10 points that are required. These are the six mandatory or required strategies. We have chosen these since these are essential for successful implementation of TDM plans, such as offering a coordinator and making information available on transportation alternatives. Also mandatory is compliance with the general plan, such as constructing required pedestrian access and frontage improvements for any project. There are 23 optional strategies included in the policy. This table here is included in the policy document that summarizes which policy is applicable to which land use type, for example, residential or non-residential project. It details the scoring system for the strategies. The points or scoring system provides flexibility in selection of the most effective strategies, given a project's location, its design, its land use type, and other variables. The allocation of points for each strategy is derived from best practices observed in the TDM policies of other cities and jurisdictions, its proven efficiency in reducing greenhouse gas emissions, and its alignment with the objectives outlined in the city's general plan and climate action plan. Some optional strategies, as listed on this slide, such as transit passes, are going to be programmatic in nature in that employers would have to set up a program to offer subsidized passes to employees and others are part of project design, such as showers and lockers for employers, and employees, sorry. Showers, lockers, and changing rooms for employees can help encourage a shift from driving to biking. These end-of-trip facilities, when paired with secure bike parking, can remove some of the barriers to commuting to work, to and from work on a bike. The optional strategies, such as providing designated carpool spaces or telecommute work centers, are taken from city's current requirements or from the cap compliance checklist. Some other strategies, such as telecommute work center for residents, these encourage telecommute programs and enable employees to work from home or another remote location instead of driving daily to work. Residential projects can support telecommuting for their residents by providing a common area with tables, internets, and other amenities. And telecommute centers should be appropriately scaled for the size of the development and shown on project plans. Other strategies, such as onsite childcare, provide opportunities to reduce trips that could be for daily pickup and drop off during working hours for working families. This amenity is also required to be shown on project plans to be reviewed by the city. Staff has also included some of the strategies that are more specific to parking. For example, unbundled parking would involve separating a residential unit's rent from parking cost. Tenants are given the option to pay for a parking pace, parking spaces' rent separate from the rent of the unit, instead of the current practice where the cost of parking is already included in the total rent. This strategy has limited effectiveness in areas where nearby free, on- or off-street parking is easily available. The applicants must demonstrate that the parking demand near a site is at least 85% of capacity during peak demand periods. This strategy is context-dependent and would need to be approved by the city after consultation. Staff has also included the options of driving, providing off-site improvement to support pedestrian or transit facilities. These include some high and low-cost transit facility improvements, such as shelters, benches, ADA-compliant bus stops for passengers. We have included on this slide a sample TDM plan for a typical residential or mixed-use project. A project of this nature would have to, would be required to include all the six mandatory strategies. And the table on the slide shows one of the options that a project applicant could choose, these strategies to come up with the total points required that are basically 10 points. So in this example, the project developer can propose providing transit passes, reserving parking for carpool, securing, providing secure parking for e-bikes and cargo bikes, include a telecommute work center for residents, provide delivery supportive amenities, and then provide some other amenities with mixed-use projects. Typically, we do see some retail operations as an example.
It happens to the best of us.
Okay, I have to cut it short.
It's okay. Take a, take a deep breath. It's okay. No, she probably had water going down the wrong, the wrong thing.
I just have a very dry throat, that's all. Okay, so this is an example of a non-residential office project. This is also required to have the six required strategies. And then the listed ones are the optional strategies, which are pretty much the same, like the residential project. I guess we included a telecommute or compressed work week, which would be like a 980 work schedule or a 410 work schedule. Additional requirements that you're considering today include removal of title 12 from chapter 12.36, which is the peak hour traffic management ordinance. And then also included in this packet is some amendments to chapter 2350, which is specific to parking and loading requirements. All the amendments to chapter 23340 are minor in nature. The TDM ordinance and policy were released for public review for 30 days comment period in July. We also conducted a public workshop, which was attended by three members of the public, and we also received three comment letters. Those are included in your packet today. Staff also presented this project to the Climate Action Plan Citizens Working Group and made some changes and updates based on the comments received from the, from the CAP Citizens Group. This project is exempt from CEQA requirement pursuant to section 15061b3, which is the common sense rule. The TDM ordinance was presented to the planning commission on October 2nd. One member of the public testified at that meeting, and the commission recommended approval by a six-to-one vote. With that, the staff concludes this presentation. We are recommending approval of the CEQA exemption for this project and then approval of the ordinance and resolution that would approve the TDM policy. Thank you.
Thank you, and good job getting through that. Oh, my goodness. I do have a question, and that is, okay, so the shuttle bus service on slide 19 that is referred to, it is also referred to on slide 17, that it is a five points. So my question is, is that, so what would require, because NCTD is going to, is planning on, you know, producing a shuttling program, which, you know, has been in the works for quite a while. What participation level is a five-point sort of situation for a shuttle that is through NCTD, something like that? How does that work? Yes, don't make her, don't make her talk, her poor eyes are watering. You honestly, you don't have to stay up here. You can, you can just go. I think, I think we can.
I was, I was coughing back there, so I, I'm pretty sure that I started this. Sorry, Sima. So that's a great question about the shuttle service. So a business or a residential development can establish a shuttle service for use by its employees or residents. And they can do that either as a sole entity where they would own and operate the shuttle service, or they can do that in coordination with NCTD. So they have the, the option to do it both ways. We don't have a great model for this quite yet, as far as how that coordination with NCTD would actually work. But we have seen in our research that it is successful by other agencies. And so we know that it could be successful in San Marcos, although we don't have an example with our local transit district.
So when I was in Maui two years ago, I, this, this why I'm asking. So they have a shuttle there, and we stayed in the Golf Villas, my friend and I. And, you know, she was like, oh, it's really cool. It's on demand. You just get your phone, you, you order it, and then it comes and picks you up. And it takes you to, you know, where all the restaurants and everything are. And so I guess my point is, so they would just need to contact whoever the transit company is, because obviously I wouldn't, I would not expect anyone to go out and buy and deal with it themselves. They don't have the expertise. I think that doesn't make any sense personally. But as, as long as there's an option, they could just reach out to NCTD, say, we want to be part of this program, whatever that entails. And, you know, maybe they pay a fee or something like that. But five is significant. But I do know, when I used it, we used it literally every single day we were there. So, in fact, sometimes even more than one time a day. So it was super convenient. And I think it definitely does work. I think shuttling on certain, you know, when you're going within the city makes a lot of sense, especially those short distances. So, okay, I just wanted to kind of figure out how that worked. I wanted some clarification. Any other questions from the council of staff? Yes, Councilmember Musgrove.
Do you foresee some of these targeted options being just impractical in some of our areas? And I know there's a wide variety on the point system. But when I see something like providing showers and lockers, are we getting a little too far into business processes and costing? It just seemed, and I get it's an option, they don't have to select that one, but a lot of them, what I see, are not really impactful, but they are part of the process. So do, have we had any projects come up where they looked at these and said, well, these are not really practical, we can't find enough to reach our potential? And is the 10 points something we've established, or is that the state mandate in addition to the six?
The 10 points is something that we have established, and we did so very carefully. As Sima was mentioning, you know, we reviewed other agencies' work products. We looked at how much each of these potential measures could impact climate change and be consistent with our general plan and with our cap. So we came up with the point scores very carefully. And then we ran several different scenarios for all different types of projects to make sure that we'd be able to get to that 10-point threshold. So we, you know, should it be a little higher? Should it be a little lower? We ran it for a number of projects that we've seen in the past, although they were not required to comply with this yet. We ran it as a hypothetical. This specific project, could they provide these amenities, and would that be enough to get them to 10 points? And we found that it could. For most scenarios that we came up with, there was a reasonably accessible selection of measures that could get them to that 10-point threshold. So that's our recommendation as staff. We feel that it's, it's realistic. But as you point out, not every measure is realistic for every project. So we've tried to offer a gamut of measures that every project should be able to find 10 points worth of measures that apply to them specifically.
I'd also like to add that one of the measures, the very last measure, is other. So if an applicant in, in formulating their TDM has something that's not on the list that'll work, that'll be something that we could entertain and possibly include in a TDM plan.
Subjectively?
Well, well, we would analyze it and see if it actually has GHG reduction or traffic, traffic reduction measure reductions.
And when would this be in effect, assuming no delays in accordance with the plan?
I believe there would be a second reading of the ordinance, and then it's effective 30 days afterward. So we're probably looking at January.
Okay. Thank you.
The policy is adopted by resolution and therefore would be immediately effective. I didn't see any conditional language in the resolution being effective only upon the effective date of the ordinance, so.
So it says introduce and also adopt in the staff recommendation.
Correct. So all, it would be instructive for projects that are going through the pipeline now. There'd be something effective that they could, they could abide by pending the expiration of the referendum period, which is the 30 days after the second reading.
What, oh, yes, council member.
Thank you, Mayor. Great presentation, appreciate it. And I really like overall the plan and how there's ample optional options. And also, I do like the flexibility that the other, the other option provides. I did have a question, though, about one of the mandatory strategies. It's on both the residential slash mixed-use and as well as the non-residential office. It's number one on the onsite TDM coordinator. Is this, is it envisioned that this is going to be a position that that's all they do? Or is this going to be somebody who's affiliated with these projects that, that would be one of the hats that they would wear? And then the second, if that's the case, what sort of training is required for them to be a TDM coordinator?
So we put that as a, as one of the required measures because what we have experienced so far is the TDM plans that we have approved for various projects do not get implemented consistently throughout the life of the project because there's no one responsible to watch if it's getting implemented. The TDM coordinator, we don't envision this person to be just full-time employees only dedicated to these duties. We expect it probably is a member of the HOA management company who is doing other duties, and this TDM implementation becomes one of the additional duties that they have. And then for a commercial project, it's probably also, again, the management company, which is responsible to manage other aspects of a shopping center, for example, would also be looking at the city-approved TDM or, you know, plan for that project, and then going through the checklist and making sure it's getting implemented and then reported to the city.
Thank you.
Deputy Mayor.
Yes, I have a couple of questions. The 10-point goal, how did, did we compare what other cities were using for their point system? And where do we compare with them?
So the TDM is set up in different ways in different cities. Some have, let's say, requirements like eight to five that are, or five to eight, sorry, applicable to residential. And then six to seven, you know, applicable to office. And then specific ones for commercial project, based on the size of it or based on the number of employees. We felt that we will actually structure it to provide max flexibility to projects and not really mandate, you know, minor requirements. And that's why we just created the point system. And that's why we just created the point system so that it, it gives maximum flexibility for the projects to design their own TDM plans that would fit their, you know, within their project design, how they want to run the project after it's constructed, et cetera.
So if we find that there's issues, I mean, they're going to have to achieve the 10 points if this is approved. If we find there are issues with entities getting to the 10 points, is that something that can be revised at a later time? I mean, I, I'm just wondering, are we, are we setting up for, somebody up for failure? You know, to get to these points?
Sure, yeah. So we do feel very comfortable that projects will be able to meet the 10 points. We do have a lot of flexibility built in, but in case we see that these strategies are really difficult for projects to implement, staff has the ability to go and change some of these requirements in the policy document.
Okay. And then I've heard several times in, in the recent past about this shuttle bus service that will be piloted at some point. So I believe our conversations have been that it might be an on-demand service versus a shuttle bus running around town. Does that qualify under this? Because if we already know it's not technically a shuttle bus service, do we want to call it that?
So the shuttle bus requirement that is in the general plan is actually one of the city's requirements that city will be looking into coming up with a program to run our shuttles, which is going to be, you know, available for anyone within, you know, within the certain geographic location in the city. The shuttle program that we have included in here is basically for, would be if a private developer chooses that measure, it will become their requirement so that it's beneficial for their employees or their residents only.
Okay, just clarifying because everything I've heard is it's an on-demand pilot that might happen. Okay, and then when Councilwoman Snella talked about the TDM coordinator, I think that was a good point. So the owner of the property would be asking their property management company to do this. So it could be additional cost to the property owner. And who's going to follow up to make sure? Because as you said, we found in some circumstances, some of what was needed wasn't being done. I could see this not being done by a property management company too. So how, how do we make this happen and?
Yeah, we will.
They make it happen?
So we will be looking at the project-specific TDM plans during the entitlement process. It will get approved with the other entitlements. For example, if a project requires a conditional use permit or a site development plan, one of those conditions of approval will be implementation of the TDM plan that this project is getting approved with. Once the project is constructed, let's see if it's a developer and they hand over the project, the property to, if it's a residential project, it will become a HOA's responsibility. And TDM requirements are not generally the only requirements that an HOA would be responsible for. They do have to, you know, look at the city's approved conditions. For example, one of the projects that is currently under construction is the Skylark or Murai project. It has a lot of open space and there are a lot of requirements and conditions in that resolution for the continued protection of the open space that's part of that project. So the HOA is ultimately responsible for implementing those requirements. And we anticipate that the TDM requirements will just be in addition to the other requirements that HOA is already responsible for implementing.
And are these, is this program for all future projects? Or what about current landlords that own property with tenants? Like I'm thinking about Creekside that we own. Does this go retro to former or only moving forward?
It's only for projects upcoming to the project.
Okay.
But of course it's available as a resource if an existing business or property manager wants to adopt one of these measures.
Okay. So we would not be requiring our property management company to have a TDM coordinator?
That's correct, yes.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Well, it's kind of like when you have a parking demand management program, right? I mean, it's kind of along the same lines that you already have that. So the HOA is responsible for that. I mean, that's how I'm envisioning it, right? Yeah, okay. I figured it was about the same. Any other discussion? Yes, council member Musgrove.
I do appreciate your indulgence on my suspicions about the entire process that we now have to, to deal with, but I do respect that you put a lot of effort into it and could never question that you offer a lot of options for these businesses and residential units to try and meet their targets. So thank you. Thank you, Sima.
I have one more question, sorry.
Yes, yes, Deputy Mayor.
The transit passes. Who pays for those?
It would be the employer or the, I believe it's only for non-residential projects. I'm not, I'm just checking, but, but let's see if it, it's both. Okay, so for, for non-residential project, generally it's going to be applicable to an office setting or maybe a commercial retail center as well where employees could be offered transit passes from, from the owner of that property or the manager.
So if they were offered to employees, they, they would have to be paid for periodically for them to continue?
Yes.
But that's between the employer and the employee as to how those passes happen?
Yes, and we would consider, I mean, it could be considered as an, as a benefit offer to employees that, yes, employers always, you know, offer free parking for, for their employees to come to work site. Another option provided is free transit passes. So instead of driving, you use the transit and trying to remove another barrier in, you know, usage of, of transit opportunities.
Okay, thank you. So I have a quick question of you, Mrs. Peak. If we approve this this evening, would we be okay directing staff to go back at a one year from implementation and do an internal review to make sure that it's working right and we don't need to make any tweaks to it? You know, any changes to the, I want to call it a cafeteria list, but I, I feel like that could be a way that we would feel assured that, that it would work well. We could find out if it's working well. We could find out if we have any issues. Do we think that would be a good idea?
Yes, so since this is a cap implementation measure, we are coming back before council every other year on cap reporting. So as part of that, we can report out on the, on how this implementation of the TDM is working or not working and what we're doing.
So could we also have you though do an internal one in case you need us to take some sort of action to make an actual change to that? And, and the reason I say that is, you know, two years or every other year is, is good. However, if we find that we have an issue and we need to make a formal change, I think it would be, because you've done an internal review of it and you say, hey, you know what, we need council to make a change. We, we, I, I think it would be good for us to, to do that. We don't have to make it a public thing unless we find that there's an issue.
Did you want them to come back even if they didn't think that there was a?
No, 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 I don't. So only if we believe that there's an issue and internally.
Yeah, I think you can just simply direct staff to do that?
Yep.
Or we can modify some of the, the findings A through D?
No, I think direct staff to do that internally. If you feel there's an issue and you need something from us, we just want to, I, I think I could speak for all of us, that if you have an issue and you need help, our help and, and make a change, that we want to be able to do that and have the flexibility for that.
I'm sure they would not hesitate to come right on back.
Okay, all right.
Absolutely. In the spirit of continuous improvement, we would absolutely do that.
Okay, great, awesome.
The question that I had about the, the timing of the resolution, did you want it to be effective immediately or did you want it to be effective as of the effective date of ordinance number 2023 dash whatever?
I think it makes the most sense that it becomes effective in conjunction with the ordinance.
So perhaps finding B in the resolution could be supplemented to say that it is approves a TDM policy, attaches Exhibit A incorporated by reference and made a part of this resolution as though fully set forth herein, comma, effective as of the effective date of ordinance number 2023, whatever the.
2023-1539 and Resolution 2023-94.
1539.
I'm sorry, 9241.
And so we can simply add that to the, to the end of B. And then therefore both things will be effective as once. And if the, the ordinance for some bizarre reason does not become effective, neither then would the resolution. But I thought if you want it to, to be immediately effective, that's what I thought the intent was because it was guidance in that interim period as well. But if, if that works better, then we'll add that, that language if the council so directs.
Okay, well, I would move approval as stated by Mrs. Peak, that it would be effective the date of the ordinances, 2023-5039 and then Resolution 2023-94, 9241. I keep trying to say 94, 9241.
I'll second with the adjustments.
Okay, any further discussion from the council?
Madam Mayor, this is a public hearing.
My apologies.
So I think we need to close the public hearing first.
Oh, I'm sorry, we need to close the public hearing.
But I think we do have one speaker.
Oh, okay.
Hank John.
Oh, okay, all right. So we'll keep the public hearing open until you're complete on that.
I just had a quick question. You're talking about a shuttle program, reference, I'm, I'm talking about the mobile home parks. You're, you're talking about new development. We have existing mobile home parks and that's one of the things our board just discussed in a board meeting last week is a shuttle program. We used to have one in the park where we could get our residents out to the stores. And for our senior park, we need that. Is, is this program going to be something that we can talk to our owners about to implement? And do we do it through the city? How, how does that affect us?
Yeah, the TDM ordinance applies only to new development. So it wouldn't apply to existing development, but property owners, they can, you know, voluntarily use any of the measures they want to, you know, implement within their own development. But it's not a, it's not a TDM, it's not a requirement right now on existing development.
So it's more like a template they could follow to implement in the park like you were talking about with, with your business? To go backwards if you wanted to have that in your business, since it's not a new business, it's existing? Is that what you're saying?
So I get, I guess, I, I think, I think I know where you're going. And let me, let me see if I, I'm understanding what your question is. I think what you're asking is, is there a possibility for you to piggyback onto some sort of existing program, which there isn't, there is not an existing program as of yet. But your North County Transit District is Deputy Mayor Jenkins.
Right.
And, and, and there is, and I know there is some movement forward because our city manager, Michelle Bender, had indicated that she recently had a discussion with North County Transit. So I guess my point would be, we could certainly reach out to you and as the, as the program is moving forward, it is going to be initially a pilot program and that will be based on a lot of different things. It has to be successful and so obviously it would need to be used. So I, I guess what could happen is now that Deputy Mayor knows that, Jenkins knows that you're interested potentially, that she could reach out and make sure that she connects you with North County Transit District and then they could work together, you could work together on that.
Okay, great. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
And later, when you're done, I can clarify some of the stuff about the disaster plan for our park.
Oh, okay.
A question to help.
Okay, all right, thank you. All right, so I move to close the public hearing?
I'll second.
Okay, motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any noes? Okay, I move to approve as originally stated back by Mrs. Peak that the effective dates of both ordinances would, I'm, I'm sorry, that the effective date would be the date of the ordinances, 2023-1539 and 2023-9241. And that would be my motion, I think. Okay, motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any noes? Okay, motion passes as stated. New business, Resolution 2023-9243 considers city council position on the California Energy Commission income graduated fixed charges for electric, electricity utility billing. I had asked that this be placed on the, on the agenda being that it does affect every single one of our residents. And the California Energy Commission seeks to implement and adopt standards and policies regarding income graduated fixed charges on electric utility bills based on an individual's income level. The CPUC needs to focus on the priorities of aligning energy demand and supply within a reliable grid that benefits the 11 million customers of the three largest utility providers instead of policies that I believe are damaging to customer relations. Policymakers would be well-served by finding ways to lower energy costs for everyone, especially those who are investing in their own sustainable energy. So this graduated income fixed charges are, in my opinion, not the answer because the policy takes direct aim at all of the environmentally conscious consumers who are motivated to conserve by electric cars and switch to solar power to conserve these valuable resources. Consumer rights are also being violated with tax income verification policies looking into customers' income tax records to charge them monthly fees that they can't avoid, no matter if they're frugal with their electricity use and how much they invest in rooftop solar and batteries for the solution for customers who have been, seen rates climb every single year. And I don't believe that it, it solves the utility of the issue of the utility companies not investing in the grid safety and reliability. And then also that the charges will only disenfranchise customers from becoming responsible energy consumers, making achieving lofty climate actions that much harder. So I had asked that we put this on the agenda because I do think that is, it's very punitive and it just is not helpful to our community. So any other discussion from the council on this?
I have thoughts.
Oh, please share them with us, Councilmember Musgrove.
It's interesting that the national, or the, the national average in the US as far as utility rates is 27 cents a kilowatt hour. California has the highest rates and SDGNE has the highest rates in the country at 47 cents a kilowatt hour. They're proposing in addition to the minimum billing, a rate reduction down to what is the national average of 27 cents a kilowatt hour. But with that comes a tiered program where minimally, if you make $28,000 or less, and that's a household income, $24 and then 27 cents a kilowatt hour, up to the highest tier, which is 180,000 or more. And while that does seem like a lot of money considering what it costs to buy a house now, I believe you have to have a household income of about $250,000 to buy a house in San Diego County now. That minimum rate is $128 and that does not give any allowance for solar, which if you're a new solar customer, it's not a dollar-for-dollar kilowatt return to SDGNE. They are taking a certain percentage and rebating you the money and the balance of it, they're putting that energy back on the market and selling it for profit, which to me flies in the face of what they should be doing, which is encouraging solar energy because it does put energy back on the grid. So for those who live on a fixed income, and I know Mr. Mosier would, would talk about this, that the folks in the trailer park that try their very best to cut costs and they use the minimal amount of electricity, which means staying cold in the winter and overly warm in the summer to keep their bills down, they're still going to look at a minimum threshold, although a reduced rate, they could still end up paying more. And for those who make a little bit more money and have invested into their homes, they'll, they'll be paying considerably more. And, and it's under the guise of providing a, a cheaper billing cycle for those who can least afford electricity. But I don't see how it works out that way. And there's an energy economist named Ahmad Faruki who says the 170-plus investor-owned utilities in this country, they used a fixed minimum averaging $10. dollars to forty dollars an hour. None of them are income-based, and when we asked SDG&E, how are you going to determine the income base, they're a little vague on their answer, but effectively, what they're going to do is get the information from the Franchise Tax Board, because, as in my case, where my wife and I live in our house, we have an adult daughter, she files her taxes separately, but it all comes back to the same address. So that is the household income, it all gets added together, and there's your minimum threshold level. So again, to me, it's a little bit more slow creep into getting into our private lives and having an investor-owned utility, taking advantage of a new law that I think was intended in the right direction, to give some benefit for those who can least afford it, and putting money back into an investor-owned company for their profits. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Any other, yes, Councilmember.
Yeah, I won't repeat everything that Councilmember Musgrove just said, but I do agree with much of what he said. This reminds me a little bit of my days on the waterboard, and we had a fixed, your water bill has a fixed component, and then it has the commodity commodity component to it. And I would say, from the lowest-income customers at the water district, we received the most complaints about the fixed commodity, because a lot of the low-income customers that we have, they were either widowed, or their kids were adults and weren't living there. Many, many homes were just, you know, had one person in the home, or they would go on vacation for a month and not even turn their water on, but they still had a bill, because they had the fixed component. And this is almost a repeat of that. And I do agree with Councilmember Musgrove, that while the intentions of this may be well-intended, the unintended consequences were going to hurt the people who least can afford to be hurt the most. And so for that reason, I think I could support this this recommendation.
Okay, thank you, Deputy Mayor.
A couple of things, as I was reading over this and the comment about the FTB, the Franchise Tax Board, I think it's interesting that a public agency like the Franchise Tax Board would share personal information with a private entity, more or less. So that's interesting to me. And the other thing is, that my understanding is that that this fixed charge provision was inserted into a bill, and they didn't debate it or discuss it. So I think those are the two big issues, two of the bigger issues that I have with it. So just those comments.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Nunez.
Thank you. One of the things that I'm thinking about, because I just really think that the education's really important, and I'm not sure how the public is being educated, so that's that's one of my concerns, in terms of anything that's being proposed or considered. So one of the things, and I'm I'm in favor of supporting this, so that's one thing that I'm thinking about, in terms of how we can help our residents become aware of this, and the education. So I would like for us to think about how we can help with that. And then the other piece, I'm wondering, is the Clean Energy Alliance taking a position on this?
It doesn't fall within our operational mandate, so no. So this is going to come down to the constituent agencies, the different cities that are part of the the alliance, so that the several council members or mayors can then take their positions, what they think best for their community. And to to kind of dovetail on what you said, they have, SDG&E held a public hearing, if you will, a week ago.
In Escondido.
It was in Escondido, which which is great. If you live in Escondido, you know it's there, but if you live in Vista or San Marcos, you have to know that it's going to be there, you have to get there. And I don't think they're doing what they could be doing for public outreach. There needs to be a lot more said about this. And to me, this is just another one of these proposals that slide by, and then we're saddled with this as an ongoing expense.
And the governing agency, the CPUC, my understanding is that, you know, they have the big council chambers there in Escondido, and there was only one employee from the CPUC present. There were not even any board members that are actually making the decision. So it is, honestly, it, I was I was told that it felt very phony, that they were actually taking the feedback, unfortunately. You know, I sent this letter last week, because I wanted I wanted them to see that. I sent that personally from from me. But I think what's happening, you know, a lot of times, the legislature, the CPUC, they make these decisions, and and nobody knows about it, and it's only when you find your bill and you're going, wait, what just happened, that you actually are, are, you know, finding out about it. So I don't know if SDG&E, I haven't looked in my bill to see if there's any insert about this or anything. Has anyone seen anything like this?
We get ours electronically, so I think.
So do I.
For the vast majority, it's, it might be an email attachment, but are you going to look at it, or are you just going to look to see what your bill is?
You're going to throw the insert out.
Probably.
Right, and we have solar, so we we true-up twice a year, so we don't really get a bill every month. Just an indication of where we are as far as a curve.
So I wonder, since you're going to have to pay this too, if it does pass, I wonder if that then, do you have to pay it on a monthly basis, or when you true-up? Do you know?
Don't know.
Okay.
But if it's a true-up, then so depending on where you fall within that scale, even if you're on the the bottom end of it, we're talking well over a hundred dollars every six months to make this happen.
Right, yeah.
I have a question. Do we know if the League's going to take a position on it?
I don't know.
Any one of you?
Well, our November meeting was canceled, getting a little bit ahead of it, so now we're going to meet in December, but we can certainly bring it up.
Yeah.
Councilmember Nunez and I will bring it up.
Well.
I think that's a really great question, so we'll.
Yeah, I I would like to support this resolution, twenty twenty-three ninety-two forty-three. My motion is to move that we take a position, that we are not in agreement, that we are opposing the position of the California Energy Commission income graduated fixed charges for electricity utility billing. So that's my motion. Do I have a second?
You probably have four of them.
Okay, motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any noes? Okay, unanimously. Okay, moving on to oral communications, we had one more speaker, Mike, regarding a Sandag concern.
Good evening, San Marcos. I don't even live in this city, but I'm concerned about the direction that our elections and our public trust is going in. We have a problem next door in Vista. It goes back, probably stems back about a year, when the city council voted over there to remove Mr. Franklin from the Sandag Board. A lot of this probably goes back, probably twenty seventeen, twenty sixteen, whenever that law firm out of Malibu, I think it was, came down and pressured all of these seventy-eight corridor cities to shift into districting. Problem is now, over in the city of Vista, we have a member on their board that is a paid seat for climate action planners. She also, this this person over in Vista, she also is the vice mayor, deputy mayor, if you will, as well as the first district seat holder over there. This individual garnered, I think, roughly two thousand six hundred and fifty votes. So in a county of approximately three-point-six million, that's a point zero seven three percentage of support countywide. This is her here. Her name is Katrina Contreras. It was her plan, it was enacted by her to rid Mr. Franklin of his seat on Sandag. There's a hundred thousand people that reside in the city of Vista, give or take. It became her duty to then appoint a new person for the Sandag Board. There are two other, three other city council members there, as well as, I guess, an at-large member, as if, I guess it was what you would call, Mr. Franklin. Out of the hundred thousand people in the whole city of Vista, Ms. Katrina Contreras decides to appoint her lover and girlfriend, District Three, City Councilwoman, the new seat for Sandag. She garnered five thousand two hundred and nine votes, and consists of, again, in a populated, estimated population of three-point-six million, one-point-four percent, point one-four percent of the vote. So combined, these two literally have less than a quarter percent of a vote within the total population of three-point-six million throughout the whole county. I'm asking, and I've asked Carlsbad, and I've asked Poway, to come up with some type of a resolution to try to restore public trust in this in this manner. There were two other city council people that she could have voted, or she could have appointed for that position, but she chose her girlfriend. It's nepotism, it's corruption at its core, it's disgusting. I do recall some statement or remarks made downtown San Diego regarding some bit of shenanigans from you, Ms. Jones, Mayor Jones. And by all means, those comments, I'm, I'd be in full support if you walked those back It's a mess. Sandag's trying to charge millions, billions of dollars to everybody throughout the county, and having a private or a special interest group with that much control on the seat that Mr. Franklin wants occupied is awful, and I would just hope to God that you guys could send a message that you guys don't accept their way of doing business in Vista.
Thank you, Mike. Okay, moving on to reports. Sandag, Mr. Musgrove, Councilmember Musgrove.
Yes, we had a fairly short meeting. We discussed, as an informational item, the proposals and options coming up in the twenty twenty-five regional plan, and that will be brought forward at a future meeting. And we also had a presentation, informational only, on the Los Am project, and that garnered a lot of discussion from board members, specifically Councilmember Gastrolin from Delmar, where they, she has a vested interest, since we're really talking about the impacts on the train tracks as it traverses Delmar, insofar as how we're going to move the the tracks and where we're going to put them, tunneling, physical relocation, bolstering, what have you. So it was a very good discussion, nothing's determined yet. I did make a recommendation to the Sandag staff, that while they are holding discussions in the city of Delmar, that the proposal to move this will run into considerable amount of money that we will all in the county, we will all be obligated to pay for. So they would be well-advised to hold some of these hearings to other regions within the county, even as far as East County, they will also pay for this. But the meeting went fairly quietly, and those were the two major items we discussed.
Okay, thank you. I actually forgot, Mr. Scala gave me one more speaker slip. I'm sorry, Mr. Mosier, you wanted to speak one more time, my apologies. Um, no, you know what, let's just take you now, so we can get, yeah, we have a few more things to do, just a few more things.
Okay, thanks.
Sorry about that.
No, it's okay. Two things briefly. One was about the disaster plan, emergency plan for our mobile home park, San Marcos Mobile Estates. Back in twenty eighteen, I worked to get our people what we needed to get the plan going. We were asked by their attorney, Jana Weinman, at a meeting to help recreate the program or get it restarted. At that time, I knew nothing about it. The plan was actually created, I think, back in like twenty-ten, maybe twenty-oh-eight. It was specified by the state that everybody had to have one. What it came to in our park is, with a senior park, and the amount of turnover we've had, the people that knew about it and were running it, and the manager in our park passed away. When I came into it, it was to try and resurrect it. I recruited somebody, a retired police officer, I got her help going around and getting block captains. The park is broken up into sections, so they refer to them as blocks. I think there's about sixteen or seventeen, the way our our park is broken up. So we recruited the people to be, and there are like six or seven homes, to keep an eye on people or get the message out if there's an emergency. We got those people lined up. Beginning of twenty nineteen, I went to our printer, I negotiated prices to get the plans for everybody, plus plans for the block captains, and then another paper along to go with it. At that time, he gave me a great price of maybe five hundred dollars max for all of that printing. That's extensive printing. I turned it in to the owners through management in January. I talked to them every week to find out process. I got an answer six months later, no, they weren't going to provide the information, they were going to provide the the material we needed to go around and get the park up to speed. And instead, they authorized the park manager to make three copies of the disaster plan to hand out to people or when they asked for them. It actually was something that I included in the rent review hearing year before last. And if I remember correctly, the owner representative was here and said that we we didn't do our part, and we didn't have block captains to fill the thing up. I tried again personally last year to get together with our in-site park manager. I asked her to spend one hour of time with me going around the park, to look at some issues, and also look at how we could take the blocks, and to bring the people together and get something going that way. The answer I've got was that she's too busy to do it. I've got my text sitting right there. I've tried to work through the board we've got. Each side thinks the other's responsible for it, and yet it takes both sides to create this thing. So if you could look into it, I'm curious, past the point of them having to recreate it, is what it takes to implement it? That's the the thing we run into. And the other thing is, on the energy deal right now that we're all looking at, from what I've been able to figure out, the fixed charge is supposed to be the delivery charge, meaning my bill's broken into two pieces, and they're supposed to be taken away, that fixed charge being tied to how much our electricity use is. I meant to look at my bill tonight, so I could give you that in particular, so I would be able to tell you how much of a difference it actually made for someone like us that does pinch pennies and really watches what they do, and for the for the price area we'd be in, how that relates to what we're paying now. I've watched those charges go up, because I also work with our residents to decipher their electric bills for them. But maybe in December, when you have the meeting in December, I'll look into it further from my end. But it's not clear what that charge really is. If it's truly just the delivery half of the bill, and then the CEA's bill, what our usage is now on the other side of it, there's a potential for us on the lower-income side that it's beneficial. The part about who tells them how much we make and whatever, all I got out of it was that we're going to have a third party, and then I believe you've explained who that third party might end up being, is going to get into telling them what we what we make, what our income is. For SDG&E right now, on a care program through the care program, you submit what you make.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Okay, moving on to League of California Cities. Okay, moving on to League of California Cities, Councilmember Musgrove.
We were notified that there would not be a November meeting, and instead we'll be meeting in December.
Got it. Okay, North County Transit.
Our monthly board meeting is Thursday, and Maria will be going as my alternate.
Okay, North County Dispatch, Joint Powers Authority.
Yes. So we're meeting this Thursday morning, so.
Oh, so you've got like a full day?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Clean Energy Alliance, Councilmember Musgrove.
Are you going to bill them at the hourly rate for your services?
Yes.
So we had a meeting October 26, and we reviewed the audit, which is conducted. And we were notified by the auditor that all of our outcomes were measured in a positive manner, no concerns. We're brought by the attention to the auditors, which is very nice to hear. We've engaged Channelside, which is a company that's going to help us manage a new account that we've taken on. And that is for the D-SAL plant in Carlsbad. They've reckoned that Clean Energy would be able to provide them a better rate than sticking with SDGNE. And because it is a Carlsbad-based business, that now Carlsbad can credit those, credit the alignment with Clean Energy towards their overall cap, their Climate Action Plan. We did adjourn with one or two items still in advance, so we met again at a properly noticed but unscheduled meeting on November 9. And in that meeting, we approved our fiscal year position controlling. And so we're going to be hiring full-time staff. And as Councilmember Sinella reported out, Greg Wade, the current city manager for the city of Solana Beach, was identified as the next chief executive officer. The city of Solana Beach has asked the Clean Energy Alliance if they could delay, if we could delay the hiring date for Mr. Wade because of their difficulties in locating applicants right now, because of, I would imagine because of the holiday season. They asked for some continuance, so we granted it out to February 1. With that as a hard date certain, so that they can continue with the recruiting process. And that concludes my report.
Okay. Moving on to city council business visits. Councilmember Musgrove and I had a business visit to University of St. Augustine for the Health Sciences. It was actually a really interesting, and you know, by the way, when we were talking to them, I didn't even realize, but they actually have cadavers there. And we didn't go in there, though. So where you see me on the right, I'm touching that big screen. That is actually what you can use instead of touching an actual cadaver, because you would never find me doing that. I didn't even want to go in there, but they weren't gonna take us in there anyway. So anyway, that is, that, it was very interesting. The whole thing was very interesting. Anyway, we met with President and Chief Academic Officer Brian Goldstein, Dr. Peters Brinkerhoff, Program Director and Doctor of Physical Therapy, and Dr. Erin Schwer, the Program Director of Occupational Therapy, and Julie Gonick, the Campus Director. So they have over 100,000 square feet in four buildings on Wendy Point there. And we toured Building C, which houses the innovation hub, which includes a Center of Innovation and Clinical Practices, 16-bed simulation room, observation room, activities of daily living and driving simulator, which helps students practice working with paid actors, like a real patient. I guess they can be cranky and everything. And they give them, and they give feedback. They also, this was really interesting, they actually have, is there a picture of the 3D printer? So they have three 3D printers.
Previous slide.
So the state-of-the-art 3D printers are used by the students to design and create assistive devices to treat patients and open entrepreneurial opportunities. One student started a company after her experience called Access Trax. So you literally attach it to your, or you just kind of roll it up, and then you stick it on the back of your wheelchair or whatever. You could actually use it for a stroller as well. And then you throw it out on the sand so you can get access to the sand. It was really interesting. Anyway, so one of their students actually made that on the 3D printer, which was really cool. Yeah, it's movable terrain for wheelchairs at the beach, for example. Anyway, it was really very, very cool. And we actually got to meet some of the students, there we are. We got to meet some of the students, and they really are engrossed. Some of them go to school for 10 hours in one day. The kids are all day, they're open pretty early, and they're open until like 10 o'clock at night. So they could be there all day studying. They have a lot of study space that they've created. And this was, I don't know, you want to talk about this part, Edward?
This was the infant.
Massage.
Yeah, it's a touch massage to help bring infants out of a regressive state for either physical or mental trauma.
Trauma, yeah.
So they use dolls. But interestingly enough, they will have, some of the students or, you know, volunteers will bring babies in, because they can see exactly what it is you're talking about. And they're very big on.
Hands-on.
Yeah, hands-on with their labs. And one of the questions I asked as we were making the rounds, they have different ways of teaching. These are students that are, while you see them sitting in the classroom, not all of them are resident students. Some live in the area and go to class every day and go to the labs. Some travel from all points around the country. The next nearest facility where they have the labs is in Dallas. So they get students coming in from the Northwest, from the Midwest, from Montana, who will do the academic work online or with some other method, and then come into the Carlsbad lab, the campus there. They'll do a short-term stay, a couple of weeks, get their labs in. And so the question about Dallas came up when I said, well, what if they don't come to Carlsbad? He says, well, the next closest is Dallas. And if your choice is to come to San Diego or Dallas, where are you gonna go? So San Diego was a very popular place for them. Very, very interesting. They have partnerships with a lot of our nonprofits. They work with any number of skilled nursing facilities and organizations where, you know, if a patient has used all of their opportunities for physical therapy and their insurance won't cover them anymore, they can come there, and each group will have a given number of students to work with that particular patient. And every group is monitored by one of their instructors. So we watch them put some of the patients through different PT phases to, you know, help get their stance back, different dexterity exercises. And it was, it's really impressive to see. They, and it benefits everyone. It benefits the people that come in for treatment, and it benefits a student, because other than a book and a doll, now you have somebody who has a legitimate issue. And so then you can, they practice the hands-on component of treating that patient in a way that benefits them without, you know, causing more injury, more pain. A lot of fun. That 3D printer that we showed, that was in the process of generating a kneecap, a patellar process. And so they use those to instruct the students. And then the students take those and use those as models when they're dealing with the patients to show them exactly what it is they're going to be doing in this particular region or wherever their pain happens to be or their issue, so they can show them on the 3D model. And now you have it on a screen and any number of ways to help those patients understand what's going on. With the mayor standing on the right, they can use that. She's touching right there what is the heart. And when you touch the heart and put it in that mode, you can actually see in the circulation system, the blood moving around through the arteries and the veins.
It was really cool.
Changes their respiratory system, you see the air coming in, alveoli filling with oxygen. It's pretty interesting.
Yeah, very cool. Okay. Oh, the Creek Project. I almost called you not by your actual job now. I'm so used to calling you deputy, but she's now our city manager, City Manager Bender.
Yes, we have some exciting updates this evening.
And?
Before we jump into Via Vera Cruise, I did want to mention that the signals at Discovery have been set up, and all the concrete driveways have been poured. So we're coordinating with the Shea Development so that we open all of that infrastructure at the same time. So there's a lot of progress along Discovery. And then, as you can see pictured in Via Vera Cruise, a lot has happened in the last couple of weeks. So the crews have been placing the roadway base. The roadway base is placed before we can pave. So paving is about to occur out in this area, which is incredibly exciting, and one of the last steps in the project. The image on the right shows the driveways that are being constructed at the shopping center. So those driveways are obviously key in making sure we can get those shopping centers open and active again so that those businesses can return to some semblance of normalcy. And then on the next slide on Via Vera Cruise, you can see between San Marcos Boulevard and Discovery, the curb and gutter have been placed the entire length of Via Vera Cruise. And the sidewalk is now complete on the west side. So the two images on the left is the sidewalk. And then sidewalk is being poured on the east side, and crews are making their way down Via Vera Cruise like this. So when the crews finish grading the base of Via Vera Cruise, they're ready to pave.
The P-word. It's finally happening.
Paving. And once that's done, then we're down to striping, finalizing signal programming, and we're ready to open.
So it's going to be December of 2024, or '23, not 2024, 2023, right?
If you say '24, Isaac might have a coronary and end up meeting some of those students.
I'll have to leave. No, no, not '24, '23, not '24.
Correct, yes.
Okay, perfect. All right, well, when we get a date, are we just gonna be like putting it on our system of, hey, we're gonna be opening on this day, and hopefully?
Yes, we're gonna communicate once we're absolutely sure. We've got a little bit of weather coming in, so once that's come and gone.
No weather.
We'll feel confident that we have a date. We certainly have a date in mind in mid-December.
Okay.
And then we'll get word out when we able to do that.
Awesome. All right, thank you. Okay, council commentary. I just wanted to give a big shout out to Parks and Rec staff. We had another wonderful Veterans Day event. So many amazing volunteers, there we are, are San Marcos native there. So I was really excited because we had so many kids that were there from our different, so many volunteers, but a lot of our scouts were present. And then we also, I wanted to also thank the San Marcos All Veterans Memorial Group. Not all of them are around anymore, but we have such a jewel here in San Marcos at Helen Bogar Park. It was, it's always a great affair, but the weather was ideal. Started to get a little bit hot kind of toward the end, but it was a beautiful day. As you can see, the sun was shining, and our San Marcos sunshine is just incredible. But anyway, any other commentary with the rest of the council? No? Happy Thanksgiving to everyone next week. Stay safe and make sure you don't eat too much turkey. Eat enough turkey, but not too much. And with that, this meeting is adjourned.